This. Okay, I guess we're recording now. Today is December twenty second, six o'clock, special meeting, we're doing this as a Zoom only call. So everyone's dialing into the Zoom. We've been going through the drafts on this between myself, Pete Gelderman and Krista. Trying to clean up the drafts and hopefully we'll get through these fairly expeditiously tonight. They're pretty long, but the process is going to be the same as what we did for seven fifty one weed. We will go through each one, we'll have to read each one, I'll have to read each one. We will start with the site plan resolution, go through that, capture any comments or changes and then since they are fairly similar, we'll hopefully get through the text resolution and the map resolution or map amendment. Fairly quickly after that. But the first one we'll start with is site plan.
Dan, excuse me for interrupting. Do we roll call or?
Say again.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes, I apologize, yes, let's do that. Dan, Braden, myself, I'm here first, next is Kent Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
John Chris.
Here.
Claire Tascornia.
Here.
Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Our Cass event.
Here.
And John Engel.
Here.
And I'm gonna call out John Goodwin, I know he's not here, but at this point, he's still on the commission. We will find out next month whether he stays on or not, but from what I understand, he's still staying on for now, so. I'll just mark him as absent for today. Alright, so that takes care of that formality. We will start with. See, this is the. This is the first one is. First item is fifty one Main Street upon red application of Ryan D. Hoyer, Hinckley Allen authorized agent for fifty one Main Street LLC. Owners for re zoning regulation amendment. To amend the zoning regulations dated June sixteenth, two thousand and seven revised December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. To add a new section five point one one housing redevelopment zone to accommodate an eight thirty G set aside development of twenty dwelling unit. Multi-family development located at fifty one Main Street in the B residence zone. Map T block forty three lot eight twenty two and located in the historic district. Pete, should I read each one of them and then we can revert back to reviewing the site plan to start?
I think so, yeah, since we're starting with the site plan, Dan, we should probably just read all three of the, that's, you're just reading the legal notice right now, so I would read all three, yep.
Yep. Next one is fifty one Main Street upon application of Ryan Hoyer, Hinckley Allen authorized agent for fifty one Main Street LLC. As owner for a petition of change in zoning boundary for the property located at the residence zone and located in the historic district. The requested change is to designate the property located at fifty one Main Street map T block forty three lot eight twenty two. As HRZ Housing Redevelopment Zone. Lastly, item number four, fifty one Main Street upon application of Ryan D. Hoyer. Hinckley Allen authorized agent for fifty one Main Street LLC. As owner for, as owner for an eight thirty G set aside site plan application for the property located at fifty one Main Street in the B residence zone. Map T block forty three lot eight twenty two and located in the historic district. So that takes care of that formality. Why don't we start with? We'll start with the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Chris.
Yep.
I have some comments on this, which I would like to share with the commission.
Sure, now, just to be clear, everyone, if John yourself, as all the other members, you've been looking through and commenting on the latest and greatest draft that was sent around earlier today, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, go ahead.
An advisory ahead of time, I've read far too many SEC filings to do myself any goods that informs my commentary on this document, so. And some indulgence, I'm looking at general findings, section A, point two. This is a consistency issue on the third line, it says for an eight thirty G set aside. Sometimes in this document, they have the section. Symbol in front of eight thirty G and sometimes it's a section, so I would just suggest. We need to choose something and be consistent with it, I would suggest just put inserting the section symbol in front of it, so A. Or and eight thirty G set aside. Also, the last line in section two. Says behind the newly relocated existing building, I would say historic building to reemphasize the historic nature of this building. Which I think is very important, given the rest of the document.
Are you looking at, are you looking at general findings point two?
Yes, sir. So that's the last line, it would be behind the newly relocated existing historic building. We use the historic building earlier in that, in that paragraph. To reemphasize the historic nature of this, which is a fairly big point we're making within the document, so I would want to reemphasize that, so they don't think it's some other building. On point three.
Hey Krista, this is, there's, the confusion is you've got the text amendment up.
Okay, sorry, I'm editing the, okay, let me figure this out. Stop share, I was editing the. Text amendment, got it, map amendment.
Yeah.
I was editing the site plan, but I guess you couldn't see it. Now I can't see it.
Booting up now. And getting that little spinning wheel.
Okay, let me try one more time, stop, share. Shares.
Sometimes it gets lost on the way, you have to.
And share. Says my screen sharing is paused. Okay, I'm not sure what's the problem here. Do you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, and is it the site plan?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yep, we got it.
Okay, sorry, continue, Mr. Chris.
Section, thank you. On the next one point three, the other document, the text amendment. Says one thing, these are probably consistent. And the map amendments is suddenly slightly different. It's in front of the point three eight number in one of them, this is the text amendment, it says approximately. Point three eight. The word approximately does not exist in the site plan. Or the map amendment, so I would suggest that we want to be consistent among the three documents. I would personally drop the word approximately, but I would defer to others if they feel strongly about it.
Okay, I'll just note that when we get to the other ones that I'll get rid of approximately.
Thank you. Also, further down on the third line of point three under general findings. It says the parcel is currently improved within office building, I would simply say a building. Since it's, I think it's empty now and just use a more generic term. Since it has been a residence as a rectory and else and had been an office too, I would just say a building. You could say an historic building, but just a building. Also, later in that paragraph, it mentions rectory is part of Saint Mark's Church. Elsewhere in the other three documents, it mentions that it was, I think, I can remember which one of it, it said it was Saint Mark's Episcopal Church. And then it became part of the congregational church, so I think we need to be clear exactly which, which confession we're dealing with. I remember this is an issue in the last time, I think the view, Mr. Chairman, was that this was not part of the Episcopal Church, but was part of the congregational church.
So I think it was built for Saint Mark's Church and then it, the church became the congregation. So that's how we, that's how we did it in the other document, Saint Mark's Episcopal, and then now congregational in parentheses.
Yeah.
That would be fine with me, Commissioner Nielsen, I would just suggest we want to be consistent in all three documents. On the identification of the background of this building. So that's that on that and. Then make sure which one of the text amendment. It's mine, that's all I have for, make sure I got that. General findings for the site plan. It is my understanding, Mr. Chairman, that section B identifies substantial public interests, that section is, as best I could tell, the same for all three documents. And so I would think that any changes we make to the text, assuming the site plan.
Correct.
Would apply to all of them.
That's correct, yep.
If I may, let me go through those. Roman numeral one, cultural and historical resources. Starts with New Canaan has one historic district, I would make it a little stronger and say only one historic district, it's a little more oomph to the statement. But that's me. The Churchill Historic District, which is its full, full name, which is very appropriate, I think. Created ninety sixty three, which contains twenty five buildings. I would, after that, include this and say comma, including the existing building on the site of the proposed development. To indicate that this, from the very get go, that this site and the building thereon is part of the historic district, which certainly is a very important part of some of the commission's findings. And I think emphasizing it from the beginning would be appropriate, so that's my recommendation there.
Commissioner Chris, excuse me, we're interrupting. Would it, would it make? Add residential, this is only, it's more than a building, these are homes that people have. Do we wanna articulate a little more than something so general as a building?
It's a very good point, Commissioner, how about this, contains twenty five buildings. Maybe prens. Churches, I think rectories, there's a rectory on, on the, there are rectories.
Yep.
Or a rectory, I think it's just a rectory. But a rectory, offices and residences, closed prens, comma, including the existing building. Would that be agreeable, Commissioner?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I think it's a good point to indicate the diversity of assets there. Right, rectory offices and residences, including existing building on the center of the proposed development, yes. Going down to point A or section A, significance of the historic district. About two thirds of the way down, it's the sentence starts with prens, the clear intent. Of the report, I'm not sure what report was referred to here, so I have to describe, reveal my ignorance.
I think the report that got it designated as a historic district.
Okay. So it was friends, we, we may want to say that the report. You know, brackets, which designated, this is historic district, it's sort of implied, but this way would be unambiguous. That would be my thought. And it would be in brackets because we're inserting into a quote. That looks fine to me, unless others have comments. Moving on to B, the design of the building.
Yep.
On third line, used the word winner. I would change that to recipient, it's similar to military designations, you don't win a medal, you receive a medal, you receive an award. I just think it's a better word than winner, winner strikes me as like a lottery or something. Recipient, I think, has more nicer tone to it and it's more accurate as well. I would say the recipient instead of winner. Also, one, two, three, four, fifth line. This is something throughout all these documents that I would suggest. We would endeavor in most all cases to refer to it as Churchill Historic District, I would use the full legal name. Each time, if it's very clear. You can't go wrong with a full legal name or full proper name. And so say Churchill Historic District in each word would be capped. So that would be something throughout the document would be changed. If it's a sentence where you start by saying Churchill Historic District and then four words later, you say historic district, you probably do it, but generally you should do that. Further down to the first bullet point in that section. There should be a quote ending that third line after historic district semi colon.
Okay.
We pick up a quote in the middle of the following bullet point, which then closes another quote. Unless it's away, or that's not, excuse me, no, there's the developments at the end of the quote, my mistake. Sorry.
So I think the quotes are closed in there, continuous and cohesive pattern of developments in quotations.
Yeah, yeah, I did my mistake, that one, sorry, yep, thank you.
In the first line, the same bullet. Why capitalize the word the?
Yeah, I don't know, let's fix that.
Yeah, okay, yeah. On section C, the value of the historic district. Again, about six lines down, the sentence, one of the key features is again Churchill Historic District. And then two lines down, we, the sentence beginning in green notes, I would say, use the honorific, Mr. Green or Attorney Green. I believe that's the gentleman being referred to.
Yeah, let's do it as Attorney Green.
Yeah. On the next paragraph, negative impacts, insert the following section, I, or phrase. Negative impact, instead of negative, instead of negative impacts which jeopardize, I would say negative impacts from a new development in the historic district are inappropriate. New development in the historic district and or alteration to an existing building would jeopardize the sort of the Churchill Historic District's eligibility. Now, it could be inappropriately alteration, since there are alterations that are made that are appropriate. But it little more, little clearer on what the negative impacts are.
Can you, can you restate that one more time?
Negative impacts from inappropriate new development in the historic district and or an inappropriate alteration to an existing building. Would jeopardize the Churchill District's eligibility, et cetera, that was my sense of the comments here from some of the experts. So anyway, that's what I would suggest, it's a little, because we do talk about two things, one is alteration of existing buildings, since we talked about part of the existing building being cut off or moved. Which we don't seem not to like, or believe is inconsistent with health safety and the defense of historic resources. As well as a new development, maybe inappropriate such as loom, which is discussed by the experts as well, so. Those are some comments I would include. Moving on to the next one, section D, historic commission, district commission. Oh, you already did that, yeah, there were, it was, the paragraph was repeated. So that was already dropped.
Okay.
Yeah, already dropped. Under fire safety, that's Roman numeral two, section C. Final paragraph, starting with Mr. Kingsbury, concludes that by noting that nothing. There's a typo. Moving on to Roman numeral three, vehicular and pedestrian safety, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Chris, again, excuse me for interrupting, back to the fire safety. The paragraph, there's a sentence that says that the Mr. Kingsbury testified at the affordable housing development. Is that really the, the true definition of this, this project, I mean, it's much more than a affordable housing, it's apartments, it's, you know, the affordable housing is a minor aspect of this in the sense of the definition of how many units.
You want to just take out affordable housing and leave testified that the development?
That would be my recommendation.
I would concur with that, Commissioner Turner. It's development, let's speak in a generic term, it's a development that seems unambiguous.
Right.
That's a good catch, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Chris?
Yes, sir, yes, Mr. Chairman, on Roman numeral three, vehicular and pedestrian safety. Under first sentence, the first paragraph notes from the it mentions town engineer Coplet, I would include P E and caps after her name always. When it's, she's first introduced, since her status is a professional engineer, certainly is an important qualification for her expertise. On the next paragraph, second line says distance issue as well. Issue is a relatively neutral term, my sense from the commentary is that there's a problem. So I'm wondering if we want to remove the word issue and replace it with the word problem, which seems to be the tone the commission is striking. Further on, the next paragraph starts with most pressing. Towards the middle. October thirteenth, there's most pressing. Towards the middle, and they even fix it's the prens, beginning prens is a space after the pren, so it's a typo. I'm not sure where it is, yeah, it's about four lines down, five lines down driveway, a little lower, next page please. It's about five lines down on page eight.
Right.
Provided on the driveway, no, 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 farther down.
Further down.
Yeah, but, yeah, but fifth line, it says, yeah, provided on the driveway. Prend space through, so drop the space.
I'm still looking for it, sorry.
One, two, three, four, five, six line. Up one. There, there, towards the end of that line. Also, towards the bottom, it's the second full, second to last full line in the paragraph. Really bad punctuation. Should be a comma rather than a semi colon. Then under B, pedestrian safety, again, the first sentence, we introduce a town engineer Maria Coplet, again, I would say P E after her name. Since the designation is an important one. And then down to Roman numeral four, stormwater, next section. Again, it introduces Maria Coplet, we should have P E after her name. For sentence under stormwater. And then third paragraph. The applicants, it should be possessive singular comma S. On the next section, determination.
Hold on, I think we have a couple other comments in here, John.
Oh, sure, please.
Yeah. You went a little fast there, if you could back up a little bit. Krista, a little further. Stop.
Okay.
Let's see. Oh, I can't find it now. It was just a word that, the word was, the word traveling, I think should be travel. It just, but it doesn't really affect the meaning of the sentence, it's just a little strange to have it. The traveling, but I can't find it now, we went, we did go by it a little while, a minute ago. Okay, never mind, it's, it's, it's a minor thing.
Commissioner Ward will publicly find it on the read through, maybe correct it then.
Okay, that's true, true.
Kent, did you have something?
Um, it was just.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that, can you say it one more time?
Yeah, it should be, the P E should be P period, E period.
Got it. I'll fix that up above in a minute. Okay, so determination and bouncing, John?
Yeah, section A, subsection A, significance of the historic district. We may want to say significance of the Churchill Historic District, again, use the full name, particularly in, in the title. On the fifth line. After the word Parker, it's a, it should be who, not that, since it's a person. And on the second paragraph. Further, comma, the applicant's proposal. To move the existing historic Red Cross building forward. I would say it that way. We've already introduced the term Red Cross building is a colloquial term, so it's already been identified in the text. And it said forward on the site would actually damage, I think the word you're looking for was clearly damage. It just seems more accurate for what we're trying to say here, at least to my mind. My understanding of the commentary from the experts that clearly damages really what was said. On the third paragraph, it says the state Historic Preservation Office. On the second line. Beginning says twenty two comma, two thousand and twenty two, that space comma, I just delete the comments, superfluous. And in the following paragraph, starting with David Scott Parker. The fifth line, starting with word changes. It's right in mind, David Scott.
Okay, yeah, I see, changes is up above.
It should be changes and alterations. Instead of and, operations is and, the D was left off. Two fifty one Main Street are permitted, not perma T.
Yeah, I, I'd caught that.
You got that, okay, okay. And on the next paragraph, the commission. This is a wording issue, and I, so it depends on what's really meant here, the commission further finds the need to protect this historic cultural and environmental resource, since we talk about the district, we're talking about a specific resource. So the word this makes it more specific than word V. We could, if our, if the intent is to protect historic cultural environmental resources in the town of New Canaan. In particular, the Churchill Historic District, we could state it that way if the commission wants, that's another way of stating it. But I would, in any case, if we want to keep the current wording, I would drop the word V and insert the word this. I think the ref referrals to the Churchill Historic District are quite clear that this is, that's what I'm on. On the, hold on, is it the same, same paragraph at the end. On the, hold on, is it the same, same paragraph at the end? The last full line. Starts the word destroy. Destroy historic cultural environmental resources that depict both local and state heritage to indicate the the breadth of damage that would occur by this development. A little stronger by putting both in would be my thinking. Also, the next, the next paragraph, starting with the commission, is the last paragraph in section A. It's a word issue. The very last line says contains only twenty-one structures comprised of twenty-five contributing properties. Or maybe it's the other way around, twenty-five, twenty-one properties.
That would should be, yeah, it should be twenty-one properties.
Yeah, only twenty-one properties comprised of twenty-five contributing structures. It's mentioned elsewhere in these documents that there are some properties that more than one structure on it. So the twenty-five contributing structures, because you used the properties twice, it can't be that. So it's twenty-one properties comprised of twenty-five contributing structures.
Yep.
Again, structures begin generic turn terms, since there are all kinds of structures there. Under section B, design of the buildings. The first sentence. It says that based upon the evidence, I'm wondering if you want to say based upon the substantial evidence. Might be a little stronger. My own view is that the evidence is quite substantial, but that's me speaking, but I think that more accurately reflects the the view of the commission, if my fellow commissioners agree.
When you have substantial in the next sentence.
No, but that's, yeah, but the statute uses it twice. That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, we have substantial evidence, substantial public interest. So they're they're both, they're separate things, but they're both substantial. I would agree, Commissioner, to start starting it. So next paragraph. Third line, it should be outweigh, not outweighs, it's a plural subject, so it would be outweigh. Is the need and requirement outweigh the need for affordable housing? Next one, vehicular and pedestrian safety. About six, seven lines down, starts with by John Thompson. It'd be P E comma, Maria Coplet, P E comma, and Michael Monteleone. So, so you know, P E attaches to somebody specific. Two more, two more paragraphs down, the commission also finds. Third line, the word applicants, it should be applicant singular.
I'm sorry, the commission further finds?
Yes, also.
No, also, above.
The third line, it says the word has word applicants, it should be applicant singular.
Right above that, right above that.
The paragraph above.
Got it.
Yep, third line.
Yeah, it's applicant singular.
One, singular.
One, that's what, that's what it says in the beginning, so.
Yeah.
On the next paragraph, third line, the word outweigh.
Get rid of the S.
Yeah, again, it's a need and requirement, so it's a plural, plural subject. Under stormwater. On the third line. Towards the end of that line. It says Maria Coplet, and then I would say town engineer Maria Coplet, P E. Since you're introducing her in a new section, I would use her formal title and her professional designation. Going about six, seven lines down. We have John Thompson, P E comma, Maria Coplet, P E. And Maria Coplet, P E. So it should be John Thompson, P E comment, and Maria Coplet, P E. We're a bit smushed together for moments. And the final paragraph in that section starts with commission further finds. Third line down, it's outweigh, again, not outweighs.
Got it.
And then under reasonable changes. On the third line, towards the end of that line. What I have is combined, these characteristics characteristics would create or cause, I would say cause irreparable damage to the Churchill Historic District. Again, use the formal term. Full, you know, full legal name. And that's, I'm not sure it's a legal name, but the full name, and then capital D and district. And then the last line, it also mentions historic district, again, I would say Churchill Historic District. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chris? Does anyone else have any additional comments or modifications to make to the document? Okay, that's good. Pete, what do we, do we need to vote on this, these changes for this particular amendment first?
Well, I know, I think the changes were.
They weren't substantial enough.
I don't want to, I don't want to minimize them, but they weren't, they didn't change the substantive meaning of the of the resolution, I don't think. Mr. Chris, do you agree?
I would concur, sir.
So, so I think with those changes, it can be read as Krista has it on the screen. With those changes and when we did, when we did weed gnome, we read the entire I think site plan.
Yep.
Resolution. We didn't read the entire text and map resolutions. We, but you, but John read into the record the changes, the differences between the two. And by the way, there's there's no legal requirement that the resolution is read out loud. The reason we do it is to be sure that everybody is in agreement that this resolution represents. You know, the 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 thinking of the entire commission, that all of these reasons. You know, represent that the the commission's position and and that it's the collective basis for its decision. That's why we read it in. And even though we've gone through it, and clearly everybody's in agreement at this point in time, that it represents the collective basis of the decision, but it's it's a little belt and suspenders, but that's why we do it.
So can we as a, as an approach to this, I can read through the entire site plan resolution. We can vote on, take a quick vote at the end to agree on those changes and on this resolution.
On the resolution, yes, as you read it, it was only one, only one vote necessary there.
Agreed. And then at the end, can we then carry the same changes and language tweaks to the other two resolutions without having to read each one of them? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the only thing I would read in the other two resolutions are those sections that are substantially different. And there isn't a lot that's substantially different, but there there are a couple of sections that are that are unique to each, that, you know, to the text and to the map.
Okay.
So I think that general findings are different in, I mean, somewhat different in the three documents and then probably the end where we get to the the decision part.
Yes, and the, and, yeah, right, and some of the changed language.
I agree. Those are the only sections I found to be different. And often that's because one's a site plan and one's a map amendment, you have to use different terms.
Right. Okay.
And I I assume no one on the commission has a problem with that. Dan, you might want to just ask to make sure everybody's good with that.
Sure. Commission members, are we all in agreement in this approach?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay, so let's get started. And and when reading through this as part of the general findings, the chart on item number five, I'm assuming I can just refer to the chart. I'm not going to go through.
Correct.
Identifying every one of the characteristics of the chart.
Correct.
That's fine. So let's get this thing started. This is the site plan resolution for the fifty-one Main Street. Application. This is the assessor's map, map T block forty-three, lot eight twenty-two. Dear Attorney Hollister, this is to certify that at a meeting of the New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission held on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. It was moved by.
We can do that after it's read. Someone can make a motion to approve and then have it be seconded.
Yep, so it was moved by XX and seconded by another person to adopt the following resolution. The commission has conducted its review and findings based on the materials and testimony in the record and based on the fact that each member of the commission is personally familiar with the site and the surroundings. Following careful review of the submitted application materials and related analysis, the commission finds the following. Section A, general findings. In evaluating the present application, the commission is first required to identify substantial public interest in health, safety, and other matters which the commission may legally consider. The commission must then determine if the protection of such public interest clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing. Finally, the commission must determine if reasonable changes to the proposed development could be made to protect such interests. Number two, the applicant fifty-one Main Street LLC, as development plan applicant and Ryan D. Hoiler Hankley Allen of Hankley Allen. Yep, authorized agent for fifty-one Main Street LLC. Owners seek approval for section eight thirty G set aside site plan application for the property located at fifty-one Main Street in the B residence zone. Map T block forty-three, lot eight twenty-two, and located in the Churchill Historic District. The site plan application proposes moving the existing historic building forward on the lot to a new location and constructing a new building behind the newly relocated existing historic building.
Excuse me, Dan.
Yep.
I'm just on number one, I believe, one of Commissioner Chris's, the, yeah, right there.
Outway.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. That's why we do this. Item point three. The development site is a point three acre parcel located on Main Street directly across from the intersections of Heritage Hill Road and Locust Avenue. The parcel is currently improved with a building originally constructed in eighteen eighty-nine in the Queen Anne's style as a rectory as part of Saint Mark's Episcopal parentheses, now the Congregational close parentheses church. It is colloquially known as the Red Cross Building. Point four. The first floor of the new proposed building will be primarily parking. The upper four floors of the new building are each approximately seven thousand one hundred and twenty-eight square feet. The applicant has proposed twenty dwelling units, two in the existing historical building on the site and eighteen in the new building. The applicant proposes to build on the site behind on the site comma, behind. Yep. Behind the relocated existing historic building. No comma needed. Oh, yeah, I guess we do, existing comma historic building. The unit split is a five bedroom, five one bedroom units, twelve two bedroom units, and three three bedroom units. Individual units will range from seven hundred and seventy-four square feet to seven hundred ninety-nine square feet for one bedroom units, one thousand twenty-three square feet to one thousand four forty-four square feet for two bedroom units and one thousand ninety-five to one thousand six hundred fifty-nine for three bedroom units. Six units will be rented, will be rent restricted as affordable. Two one bedroom units, three three bedroom units and one three bit three two bedroom units and one. Yeah, and one three bedroom unit. Furthermore, not all of the existing historic building will remain intact. Portions of the historic building will be partially demolished. I think we should rephrase that slightly, saying portions of the historic building will need to be partially demolished.
I don't even think you need the word partially because it's portions.
That's the point. Will need to be demolished. And take out the B in front of need. Right in front of, yeah, that that be, yep. Point five, the proposed development would can, would be constructed in accordance with the following standards of the proposed housing redevelopment zone. And here we have the matrix identifying the criteria for lot area all the way down to setbacks for B's residence zone for proposed development and for the HRZ. I won't go and read each one of these, but the matrix is included in each one of the resolutions. Point six, the proposed development would include onsite parking in the amount of twenty-six spaces or one point three spaces per unit. Point seven, the site development. Sorry, the site plan application is considered an affordable housing application, which means it will support a development where not less than thirty percent of the dwelling units will be conveyed by deed containing covenants or restrictions, which shall require that for at least forty years after the initial occupation of development. Such dwelling units will be sold or rented at or below prices which are thirty percent or less of the tenant's annual income. Where such income is less than or equal to eighty percent of the state or area median income, whichever is less. According to the twenty twenty-two figures, the state median income for a family of four is a hundred and twelve thousand six hundred. And the area median income for a family of four is a hundred eighty thousand nine hundred. Therefore, the state median income would be used for these purposes. Section B, identify substantial public interests. These include four categories, cultural and historic resources, fire safety, vehicular and pedestrian safety, and stormwater. Category one, cultural and historical resources. New Canaan has only one has only one historic district, the Churchill Historic District, created in nineteen sixty-three, which contains twenty-five buildings. Parentheses churches, erectory, offices, and residences, close breath. Including the existing building on the site of the proposed development. The buildings in the historic district date back to the eighteenth century at the earliest, with the town common dating to seventeen seventy-three. Two of the three churches in the district have been continuously used for more than a hundred twenty-five years. And the core of Churchill remains the same as it was in seventeen thirty-one when New Canaan was founded. David Parker Scott, preservation architect. Todd Bryant, M A, I think I would get rid of that comma behind Bryant. Yep, of heritage resources and Darren Reiman Locke, PhD. I would get rid of the comma behind Locke. PhD principal, Sawdust and Strata. All all offered evidence and testimony into the record of the value of the Churchill Historic District and the damage to the district from the applicant's proposal. Subsection A, significance of the historic district. Todd Bryant, M A. Let's, yeah, get rid of that. Yep. In his correspondence to attorney Joel Green. Dated August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, which was submitted into the record, states that the National Park Service defines a historic district as an area, usually a group of buildings, structures, or further states that a district derives its importance from being a unified entity, even though it is often composed of a wide variety of resources. The identity of the district results from the interrelationship of its resources, which can convey a vital sense of the overall historic environment. Close breath. The, I think we have double parentheses there, yeah. And.
Not parentheses.
I don't know.
Quotes.
Sorry, quotes, yeah.
It's Kent Turner, I'm sorry to interrupt. You said vital in it's, the text is visual.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
And I'm not, I'm not sure that, you know, maybe vital is better. Vital is better.
But I think it's a quotation, so I think we have to go with whatever.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yep. Okay. The New Canaan Historical District was created in nineteen sixty-three and included buildings and structures associated with the Canaan's early history. As Darren Raymond Locke indicates in her. Uh, correspondence to Joel Green, attorney Joel Green. Dated August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, and entered into the record, the clear intent of the creators of the report. Designating this area as a historic district. Were to highlight the deeper awareness of the value of such areas to ensure that any changes would be improvements in the buildings. Since any one of these could be so altered or replaced that it might detract or detract. Or even. Yep, deface the entire district and to assure any alteration or replacement would be in harmony with or. Conform to the character of the district. Subsection B, the design of the building. David Scott, uh, David Scott Parker, a historic preservation architect, principal of a twenty-member architecture and historic preservation firm. Trustee of the National Trust for Historic Preservation and recipient of over forty awards for historic preservation and adaptive reuse. Goes into great detail regarding the design of the building and the resounding negative impact. The proposed project would have on the Churchill Historic District. The Red Cross Building, comma, formerly the Rectory for Saint Mark's Episcopal, current now the Congregational, close brent church of New Canaan.
Comment there. This is sort of bothered me. We refer to Saint Mark's Episcopal, now the Congregational Church. Is that really accurate? Was the Congregational Church originally called Saint Mark's Episcopal? Because Saint Mark's Episcopal Church is, is up the road a bit.
Right, it is now, but I'm assuming that back when the historic district was founded, that Saint Marx was what the Congregational Church is today.
Okay.
I mean, the, the Saint Mark's Church up the road on O and Oak was clearly built in like the sixties or something, so that's not an original location for that church.
Okay, fine, I was just.
Church for Saint Marks, the one that's still standing is now the Lutheran Church. They. They needed more space. They sold their church to Lutherans and they moved north. I think this is indicating to, to me that the, uh, rectory was. Uh, originally for the Episcopal Church and then moved over to the rectory for the Congregational Church is how I'm reading it. But. Again, it's a, it's a technical fact where it's either right or wrong, so I.
I'll look for, um, David Scott Parker's letter as Dan keeps reading and also if I can find the quote.
Yeah. Since it's a quote, you know, we go with what it says.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Okay, does, okay, so I'm looking at David Scott Parker's letter from August nineteenth. And it says the residence is at fifty-one, the residence at fifty-one Main Street is an integral part of this larger history, having been constructed as the first rectory for Saint Mark's Episcopal. And then in parentheses, now first congregational church. So that's where we're getting this from, is from.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well done. So we do want to say now the first congregational opposed to the congregational.
I don't know if it's the first cut. I think he might be wrong. Cause I looked it up online and it's called the Cong- Congregational Church of New Canaan.
Yeah. Good enough for me. I think we're fine if we leave it as congregational.
Yep.
It is the only one in town, so. So, um. The Red Cross Building, formerly the Rectory for Saint Mark's Episcopal, now the Congregational Church of New Canaan. The centerpiece of the Churchill District, uh, Churchill Historic District is the only example. Quotes, the only example of Queen Anne slash stick style design in the historic district and retains virtually all. Virtually all of its original details, close quotes. The two-story frame house. Quotes resident rests on its original brick masonry foundation and is set back from the street as was a prerequisite. Uh, as was a prerequisite for residents. Yep. For residences in the Queen Anne era. Dr. Raymond Locke notes that in addition to the consistent fifty-foot setback. The Red Cross Building currently shares a number of other design elements that are consistent across the Churchill Historic District, including a front-facing gable. And then asymmetrically placed front entrance. All buildings with one exception in the di- district include prominent front porch or elaborate entryway. The proposed development would significantly alter several of the historic components of planning and development, including the following. Point one. Under the applicant's proposal, the setback of the building would be reduced from fifty-two point nine to five point nine feet. Eliminating the continuous and cohesive pattern of development found throughout the historic district. Point two, the prominence of the facade on of fifty-one Main Street would be, quote, consumed by the larger development, which is to be built at the rear. The facade consequently is no longer the main feature, but subservient to the new structure. It is dominated by it, close quote. Subsection C, the value of the historic district. Todd Bryant and his correspondence to Joel Green dated August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, which was submitted into the record, quotes the National Park Service in reference. Would say attorney Joel Green again. Yep. Excuse me. No problem. Was submitted into the record, quotes the National Park Service in reference to analyzing the value of a historic district. Whoever is answering phones. Open quotes, uh, a district derives its importance from being a unified entity, even though it is often composed of a wide variety of resources. The identif- the. Identity of a district results from the interrelationship of its resources, which can convey a visual sense of overall historic environment. One of the key features creating unity within the Churchill Historic District, according to. Brian, according to Mr. Bryant. Is the consistent rhythm and coherence of the street scape within the historic district. Attorney Green notes that the proposed development would result in negative impacts to all seven aspects of integrity. Utilized by the National Park Service and nominating a historic district eligible for listing on the state and national. His register of historic places. Those are location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. Negative impacts from the inter inappropriate new development in the historic district and or an inappropriate alteration to an existing building. Would jeopardize the Churchill Historic District eligibility for listing on the state and national register because, as noted by Dr. Raymond Locke. A new addition must preserve the building's historic character, form significant materials and features. It must be compatible with the massing, size, scale, and design of the historic district while differentiating. While differentiated from the historic building. It should also be designed and constructed so the essential form and integrity of the historic building would remain if the addition were to be removed in the future. David Scott Parker notes that the proposed project would permanently alter the context and surroundings of both the Red Cross Building. And the Churchill Historic District by proposing a new building that is over seven times the size of the existing Red Cross Building. With an interior volume that is over ten times the Red Cross Building, that is. Exponentially out of scale with the remaining nineteen hundred square foot historic residence and totally incon- incongruous. With all the structures in the district. Subsection D. Historic District Commission. The applicant elected to not file a concurrent application with the Historic District Commission for a certificate of appropriateness. Appropriateness for the proposed alterations and modifications to buildings in the New Canaan Historic District. The commission always seeks input from the HTC for applications within the historic district. As a result, the commission referred the application to the HTC for comments. In its comments to the commission. To this commission, the HTC stated that the proposal would not be consistent with the dis-. Uh, not be consistent with the Churchill Historic District.
Chairman Brad. Would it be more. It's in its comment, I mean, it was, it's review, it's analysis, I mean. Something more than just its comments.
In its report to the commission. Would that be better?
Yes.
In its report to the commission, the HTC stated that the proposal would not be consistent with the Churchill Historic District. The HTC deferred any comment on the design of the buildings pending an application for certificate of appropriateness. Subs- uh, section two, fire safety. The Planning and Zoning Commission hired Andrew Kingsbury, an expert in the techniques and requirements of firefighting, to review the project with respect to fire safety. Mr. Kingsbury is the former ch- fire chief in Westport. In Westport, Connecticut, in Westport CT. And currently the fire chief for the Nichols, Connecticut Fire District. An adjunct instructor at the Connecticut Fire Academy and the chairman of the Fairfield County Hazardous Incident Response Team. Mr. Kingsbury reviewed the project in a letter dated July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two and revised on October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Kingsbury testified that the development would create several significant risks to life and safety. The Planning and Zone and Commission also hired Christopher Lau, AIA, to review the architectural plans. Mr. Lau's comments reiterated a number of Mr. Kingsbury's concerns. Point A, access for fire apparatus and emergency vehicles. According to Mr. Kingsbury, while some modifications were made to the single-axis driveway. Truck turning figures for fire apparatus into the access driveway are not provided in the site plan review set. Rendering it impossible to fully evaluate risks to life and property. Subsection B, access to exterior firefighter operations and staging. Mr. Kingsbury notes that aerial access to the building is impeded. The west side of the building has a side yard setback as close as five point one feet. And the nine balconies that are still proposed continue to create obstructions as they are typically within two point one feet of the property line. Aerial access on the east side of the building is similarly impeded by six projecting balconies. Mr. Kingsbury noted a number of obstructions surrounding the building that would prevent ground ladders from being deployed in the event of a fire. Including landscaping, fencing, park cars, and screening on the adjacent property. Subcheck subsection C. Stairwells and interior access. Mr. Kingberry notes that with regard to the stairwells, the architect should verify. Uh, should verify accessibility for occupants of the proposed roof level to the southern stairwell at the rear of the structure. Mr. Kingsbury continues, sheet SD three shows the occupants of the three-bedroom unit would have to exit to the outside deck. Pass through a door and then travel along an outside balcony adjacent to a two-bedroom unit to travel back inside to the enclosed stairwell. As the secondary means of egress. Occupants of the fitness center would have to follow a similar route to reach the second stairwell. The architect should confirm this route conformed. Conforms to the recently adopted state. Uh, state codes. Yeah, let's just leave it as recently adopted state codes. Sort of all encompassing there. With regard to the building, uh, with regard to the relationship between the access driveway and the stairwells, Mr. Kingsbury writes, a fire apparatus. Access road should extend to within fifty feet of at least one exterior door that can be opened from the outside. And that provides access to the interior of the building. Access to the closest exterior door appears to be the northern stairwell adjacent to the elevator. This distance measures in excess of sixty-five feet on the revised plan. Mr. Kingsbury concludes by noting that, quote, access to the site and rear building as proposed is inadequate for fire apparatus. And for rescue and fire suppression operations, close quote. Subsection D, architectural design and code compliance. Mr. Lau echoed. Several of the health and safety concerns that Mr. Kingsbury noted, while also pointing out that major elements of the design of the building are not at all abundantly clear. Are not. At all. Um, I guess that.
Are not abundantly clear.
I.
Just are not clear. How about just are not.
I would just get rid of abundantly.
Yeah.
Are not at all clear. I would leave the at-all in there. Yeah. Making it impossible for the commission to ascertain what they are actually approving. Drafting failures exist throughout the plan such as. Comment fifty-six notes that the west elevation fenestration does not match that shown on plans. Comment fifty-seven notes, the east elevation fenestration on the roof level, fifth floor, does not match that shown on plans. Comment fifty-eight notes that the south elevation fenestration at the roof level, fifth floor, does not match that shown on plans. And finally, comment fifty-nine notes that for the north elevation, the elevation shows a window adjacent to the door to the existing building. That is not shown on the plans and fenestration at roof level, fifth floor, does not match that shown on plans. Despite the failure of the architectural plans to elucidate a clear defined proposal. A number of code violations exist in the design and a number of critical questions remain regarding serious life safety issues such as. Comment fifty-three, roof level, fifth floor, the exit access door to the south stair, southernmost order the roof, uh, southernmost door to roof deck. Scales from forty-four feet. Not, uh. Yeah, take the first from out of there.
The first one.
Yep. Scales forty-four feet from door to north stair, center line to center line. The maximum diagonal of that story scales a hundred and fifty-two feet. Re- uh, required separation distance equals one fifty-two divided by three, which is fifty foot eight. This is not compliant with section one, one thousand seven point one point one of the NFPA. Comment sixty, since the distance between the existing and new buildings is less than six feet, the fire separation distance on at least one of the buildings, perhaps both. Will be less than three feet. Therefore, at least one of the buildings can have no openings in the, uh, no openings. Plural. In the facing wall. Uh, TR three oh two point one, sub subset one and T point seven oh five point eight. Which this will eliminate either the required exit from the second floor apartment in the existing building. Or the required exit from the parking garage. And then finally, comment sixty-three, the egress balcony created to access the south stair from the roof level, fifth floor, does not appear to comply with IFPA. Section one oh two point, one oh two, one point four, item two. An example, it is not ten feet wide. Section three, vehicular and pedestrian safety. Subsection A, vehicular safety. Notes from the October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, memo from the town engineer Maria Coplet PE indicate that the applicant has not fully analyzed the potential traffic impacts of the project. The proposed residential building has been relocated further to the south of the property to be only one foot off the property line. To be. On the south of the property to be only one foot off the property line. Appears to have the potential of being a visual obstacle to drivers on the adjacent town property. Given the adjacent. Given the adjacent properties to the south and east are active driveways. The applicant should just demonstrate sufficient sight distances available at each off-site driveway and. That sufficient stopping distance is provided. Is provided in the existing driveway running east-west. Uh is provided in the existing driveway running east, west. Uh, the October twenty third, twenty twenty two letter from John P Thompson P E. Notes that sight distance. Notes the sight distance problem as well, Mister Thompson is a certified licensed. Traffic engineer with extensive experience working in Connecticut hired by the commission. To review the materials submitted by the applicant with respect to parking, traffic and sight lines. In October, in the October twenty third letter. He states, from a practical standpoint. The depicted sight line from the site driveway looking to the right to see traffic traveling west on Main Street. Crosses the property line for the adjacent private property. Immediately to the east and which the applicant has no control over. If this adjacent private property owner were to install a fence, stone wall or shrubbery. Legally and fully on their property. The sight line would be reduced from the required I S D, meaning intersection sight distance of two hundred eighty seven feet. Down to approximately two hundred feet, which is. Less than the required I S D. And then one second. Uh most pressing, according to Mister Thompson, are traffic control operations. As stated in the October twenty third letter, as well as at the October twenty fifth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Unanswered is the issue of how exiting vehicular traffic is controlled, leaving the site drive. And entering traffic signal controlled intersection of Main Street, Heritage Hill Road and Locust Avenue. The applicant's traffic engineer has analyzed but not proposed. The installation of traffic signal control for the driveway. Instead, they have. Deferred the decision to see Connecticut D O T. As part of the required highway encroachment permit process. While they are correct in stating that the final decision whether to install traffic signal control for the driveway rests with the. See Connecticut D O T. From the standpoint of providing for safe vehicular movement for traffic exiting the site. A traffic signal control should be advocated by the applicant. For safety reasons and not left. To others, quote unquote, others, to advocate for the safest operation possible. Traffic signal control can physically be provided on the driveway through a separate vehicle actuated phase six. And not and have no adverse impact on the twenty twenty four build conditions. Mister Thompson notes that no formal submission of the required highway encroachment permit has occurred. Which is the only time the decision to include a signalized intersection can be made. Mister Thompson further states that it is essential to understand. That without positive traffic control, in example, a. Traffic signal controlling the exit driveway, a driver, a resident, a visitor, the delivery. And our vehicle exiting Main Street uh. Is that all from his quote, I'm trying to. Doesn't seem to. I think.
Way to that end of that paragraph, the quote.
I know, I know, but I think the parentheses. Where it's a resident, a visitor, a delivery vehicle or other vehicle. I, should that be in parentheses or should it read, in example, a traffic signal controlling the exit. Kind of a driveway. Oh, I see what he's saying, okay, no, I'm sorry, I'm just misreading it. Traffic signal controlling the exit driveway, a driver, which could be a resident, a visitor, a delivery vehicle or any other vehicle. Exiting the site into. The Main Street Heritage Hill Road and Locust Avenue intersection. Does so with absolutely no idea what other traffic has the lead. Uh right to traveling, has the legal right to traveling through the interest.
Oh, I think that's where Dick wanted us to fix it.
Yep, and I think it should also have absolutely no idea whether, not what. Other traffic, but whether other traffic. Other traffic has the legal right to travel through the intersection, yeah, that makes sense now. This situation is clearly undesirable, unsafe, and something that is to be dis-. That is discouraged by the M U T C D. Especially when there is a visible and feasible strategy to address the potentially unsafe situation. Section B. Pedestrian safety. Notes from the October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two memo from town engineer Maria Coplet P E. Indicate that the project creates an immediate pedestrian safety hazard by design. On site driveway catch basins designed to over top. Over top in peak storm events have been added to the design. No, uh. Yeah, no new discharges are permitted to discharge on. Does that read right that like, well, I guess it's her quote, so. Uh no new discharges are permitted to discharge to the property line and or the town right of way. As currently designed, the location of the catch basins would not allow sufficient space on property. To diminish the impacts of runoff and would great and would create the potential of new icing conditions. At the sidewalk in the town right of way. Both the October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two memo from Mrs. Ms. Coplet. And the October twenty third letter from Mister. Uh Mister Christopher Lau. Um. I think I would take the Christopher out if we're referring to. Maria as Ms. Coplet, let's, yeah. Indicate that the applicant left unanswered critical questions related to pedestrian safety regarding ADA compliance and proposed walkway widths. Mister Lau writes, Deandria's uh. Should be postrophe after Deandria. Post yes. Deandria's sheet one of six shows a drop off area in front of the site. If that is to be used as a drop off for residents, it must comply with I C C and C A one seventeen point one. Requirement for an accessible loading zone and an accessible path to an accessible entrance is required. The proposed project presents a pedestrian safety hazard in the parking garage during during and after a storm event. In the October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two letter from Ms. Coplet, it is no, from Ms. Coplet comma. It is noted that stormwater chambers in the garage have been designed to allow for six inches of ponding on the pavement during storm events, which is not permitted. The ponding in a heavily utilized parking garage will result at increased risk of pedestrian falls in the parking garage. The record contains substantial evidence that the development lacks sidewalks to connect it to the town's sidewalks. In fact, in the proposed text amendment, section five point eleven point F point four point D. The applicant specifically excludes. This development from the requirement in the new Canaan zoning regulations, section six point ten. That requires new or reconstructed sidewalks at least four feet in width. Along the street frontage or frontages of the parcel or parcels. Unless the commission determines that sidewalks are either impractical or unnecessary at that location. Considering prospective pedestrian traffic. Section four, stormwater. Notes from the October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two memo that the town engineer Maria Coplet P E indicate. That the applicant did not perform necessary analyses. Uh to understand. The environmental impacts of the proposed project with respect to stormwater. With regard to existing conditions, Ms. Coplet writes, a revised sanitary sewer connection report was requested asking to clean. To clean and televise. C C T V approximately three hundred linear feet of sanitary sewer. That doesn't make sense, is that her actual quote? Can we just, you wanna just, uh Chris, you wanna highlight that a- asking to clean and televise C C T V?
No, that's, that's right, Dan, that's what it is, it's a, they run a camera through the line.
Okay, to clean and televise C C T V approximately three hundred linear feet of sanitary sewer utilizing a flow monitor. Applicant stated that this will be provided, however, it was not submitted, leading engineering to be unable to complete their review. With regard to the proposed project, Ms. Coplet writes. An amended sanitary sewer connection summary report was requested asking to document existing sanitary sewer flow conditions of the existing. Main with the added calculated sanitary sewer flows from the proposed mixed use development. The amended sanitary sewer connection summary report was not submitted, leading engineering to be unable to complete the review. The applicant's own documents submitted into record estimate stormwater runoff. Uh impacts despite the refusal to analyze the extent of those impacts. The revised drainage report submitted by Deandria Survey and Engineering. Dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty two. Noted a twenty one percent increase in peak flow rate for the fifty year storm at P O C A. And a seven, one hundred and seventy five percent increase in peak flow rate for the one hundred year storm at P O C A. Uh with regard to the parking garage and as mentioned above in pedestrian safety. The letter from Ms. Coplet indicates that stormwater chambers in the garage have been designed to allow for six inches of ponding. On the pavement during stormwater events, which is not permitted. Pretreatment has not been demonstrated for the subsurface system located in the garage. And the applicant failed to demonstrate sufficient clear height to allow maintenance vehicles, vacuum trucks, for example. To access subsurface, the to access subsurface system in the garage. Section C. Determination and balancing. Uh subsection A significance of the Churchill Historic District. Based upon the evidence and testimony presented to it, the commission finds that there is substantial po- public interest in the preservation of life. Property and cultural and environment, life property and cultural and environmental resources. The commission finds that the most persuasive and accurate testimony was presented by the three historic preservation experts, Todd Bryant. Darren Raymond Locke and David Scott Parker. Who spoke of how, yeah, comma. Who spoke of how the building at fifty one Main Street contributes to New Canaan's only historic district. The Planning and Zoning Commission weighed the need for six units of affordable housing at this location against the need. To preserve the only historic district in New Canaan that is comprised of twenty one, twenty five buildings slash structures. While both are pressing needs in the. Uh in the is insist instance, the commission finds that the need to preserve New Canaan's only historic district outweighs the need. In this. Yeah, that's right, that's why I didn't read right. In this instance, the commission finds that the need to preserve the new, preserve New Canaan's only historic district. Uh do we say outweighs or significantly outweighs?
Clearly.
Clearly outweighs, yeah, that's better. The need to construct six affordable housing, affordable dwelling units. Further.
Chairman Redman.
Yes.
Um. We we should probably. The names Todd Bryant, uh you know, either P E. Or uh R A.
Professional certification at the end, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Figure out what it is.
Yeah, we can check those.
Todd Bryant. Darren Raymond Locke is a P H D.
Well, Todd would have two Ds.
No, I think it only has, it's only has one throughout the whole document, so I'm assuming.
Just T O D huh?
Yeah. Dave, David Parker Scott doesn't have, at least I don't see any um professional certification.
Some F A I A.
F A I A.
Mm hmm. Great. Anyone else with a comment on this paragraph?
Um, wasn't it clearly? There's only to clear outweigh the need, isn't that? Consistent with the rest of the document?
Mister Chris, is that what we do?
It's outweighs.
And uh well, it was, well, both are. The need. Outweighs. The subject of the of the sentence is need, need outweighs, yeah. Need is the subject of outweighs.
Yeah, uh that looks correct.
Okay.
You must have had some nuns teaching you, John.
As I sing your slap with a ruler.
For reading S E C documents.
All right, we'll move on. Further, the applicant's proposal to move the existing historic Red Cross building forward on the site would clearly damage and alter the integrity of the fifty one Main Street. Building as a resource and as stated in David Scott Parker's correspondence. Quote severely altering the integrity of the historic structure, its historic setting. And its relationship to the district's streetscape where virtually all buildings are uniformly placed fifty feet from the street. Um, the start, the State Historic Preservation Office noted in its correspondence dated August twenty second, twenty twenty two. That this quote, this structure is a critical component of the district located at its eastern edge. The proposed modification, which would bifurcate the building, leaving only a portion of the facade would comprise. Would compromise the integrity of the contributing resource and a road at a road uh. At the districts. Yep.
And I think we need quotations at the end here to close it.
Yep. Perfect. Um David Scott Parker concluded his correspondence with the statement. Look quote, located at the heart of the community, the Canaan Historic District. Um is small by most standards, consisting of a mere twenty one properties containing a grand total of only twenty five contributing historic structures. It should also be noted that if the proposed changes and alterations to fifty one Main Street are permitted. This building would no longer be eligible for national registered listing, reducing the number of qualifying historic structures here to twenty four. And forever irreparably, irreparably, that irreparably. Altering the historic integrity of the community's cultural core. Additionally, if approved, this massive intervention in the historic district would s- will set a dangerous precedent. As it permanently erodes the seemingly protected historic, environmental and cultural resource. The commer- the commission further finds. That the need to protect this historic, cultural and environmental resource clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing. The commission finds that based on the substantial evidence in the record, including but not limited to. Including comma, but not limited to comma. But not, no, the comma goes after the two.
Oh, sorry.
The evidence cited above, the proposed housing development plan will result in a significant and ser- Will result in significant and serious threats to both the lives and safety of the residents of the proposed development. And the destruction of. Historic, cultural and environmental resources. The church, the Churchill Historic District is listed on the state register. Which according to the correspondence from the State Historic Preservation Office. Quote, is Connecticut's official list of struck of structures and sites. That characterize the historical development of our state, close quotes. Thus, go ahead.
Dan, I'm sorry for interrupting, um. Uh back up a little bit, um. The development will result in significant and serious threats to both. And safety of the residents. Of the proposed development, it's, it's not only the residents, but it's the overall community. When you factor in the roadways and the transportation side of it, um.
That sentence probably does not belong. In that section. Because it's, that's the historic. Uh district section and and threats to lie uh the lives and safety of the residents, but. Um it does. Significantly affect the, i- it's an. Significantly affect the, i- it's an environmental, historic structures are environmental. Um, and there's case law to this effect. It's an environmental interest, so. Yeah, I think it could say result in significant and serious threats to the environment. To the environment and the destruction of historic. And take out both lives and safety, yeah, yep. I think that works. And two.
What, would you, would, would it be, uh, Pete, would it be okay to say? Results in significant and serious threats to the environment and community, comma. And the destruction of historic, cultural and environmental resources?
Sure, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Just to throw a little bigger umbrella out there.
Yeah. Who, the destruction.
And.
Yep. Okay. The Churchill.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, perhaps in front of, um. Uh destruction of historic, say irreplaceable historic and environmental resources.
Agreed.
That's agreed by the commission?
Yep.
That seems to be what was stated by the experts, that when it's gone, it's gone.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Church, our district is listed on the state register, which according to the correspondence from the state Historic Preservation Office, quote. Is Connecticut's official list of structures and sites that characterize the historical development of our state, close quote. Thus, the proposed development proposes to destroy historic, cultural, environmental resources that depict both local and state heritage. The commission finds that the need to third historic, cultural and environmental resource clearly outweighs the need for six affordable housing units. Affordable housing. For six units of affordable housing, particularly since the Churchill Historic District is relatively small and contains only twenty one properties. Comprised of twenty five contribute structures. Subsection B, design of the building and site. Uh, design of the building and buildings and the site impede fire operations. Based on the substantial evidence and testimony presented to it, the commission finds that there is substantial. Public interest in the preservation of life and property by minimizing the threat from fire and similar catastrophes. The commission finds that the most persuade, persuasive and accurate testimony was presented by Andrew Kingsbury, the Canaan Fire Marshal Payne. And the Canaan Fire Chief Bassett. The commission finds that municipal fire protection capabilities in Connecticut are determined individually at the local government level. And operational challenges are best determined by local ex- experts. The commission further finds that the need to protect the lives and property of the residents of the town of New Canaan and the requirement to provide adequate means to accomplish such need. Clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing. The commission finds that based on the substantial evidence in the record, including but. Uh, including but not limited to the evidence cited above. Yep. Uh, the proposed housing development plan will result in significant and serious threats to the lives and safety of the residents. And the property of the proposed development and residence. Uh, property of the proposed development and residents and property near the proposed development. Caused by an inability to fully access the development. The risks will be, will also be extended to per- prospective tenants of the proposed property. And their guests.
I don't think, I don't think you want to put that comma i- after the not le- limited to.
Okay.
I think that sentence. Doesn't need it. Based on the substantial evidence in the record, including but not limited to the evidence cited above. I think that's the phrase, yeah.
And then. Okay. Leave the rest of it, Mr. Ward.
Yeah, no, the rest of it's fine.
Okay. Subsection C, vehicular and pedestrian safety. Based on the evidence and testimony presented to it, the commission finds that there is substantial public interest in the preservation of life and property by minimizing the threat. To vehicular and pedestrian safety with respect to how traffic is controlled, exiting the site driveway. And entering the traffic controlled intersection of Main Street, Heritage Hill Road and Locust Avenue. The commission finds that the most persuasive and accurate testimony was presented by John Thompson P E, Maria Coplet P E and Michael Monteleone. The commission finds that the safety of the vehicles and pedestrians is a critical component of this proposal. Further, as noted by Mister Monteleone and Mohammed Amir Siddi- Siddiki P E. In their correspondence to Joel, to attorney Joel Green.
And P E might as well put the periods in it.
Yep. Dated August twenty second, twenty twenty two, the proposed site layout does not allow for the. Internal circulation of delivery trucks, garbage trucks, snowplows, delivery vans, fire trucks and other emergency vehicles. Additionally, the trucks making deliveries, garbage trucks picking up trash and or refuse. Snowplows and moving vans would need to back out of the driveway directly into. Main Street, which is a state road in this location and Heritage Hill Road and Locust Avenue. Causing serious safety concerns.
Very minor point, uh, on the third line of that, it should be pedestrian singular, not pedestrians, safety.
Oh, at the top, yeah, right there, pedestrian safety. Thank you. The commission also finds that the applicant has failed to confirm that the site will be ADA accessible. In the October twenty third, twenty twenty two correspondence from Christopher Lau, A I A. Mister Lau indicated that the applicant failed to address critical questions related to pedestrian safety regarding ADA compliance and the width of walkways. The commission further finds that the need to protect the lives of the property, uh, live. The lives and property of the residents of the town of New Canaan and the requirement to provide adequate means to accomplish such need. Clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing. The commission finds that based on the substantial evidence in record, including but not limited to the evidence cited above. The proposed housing development plan will result in significant and serious threats to the lives and safety of the residents and property. Of the proposed development and residents and property near the proposed development caused by traffic plan. And the applicant caused by the traffic plan that the applicant has proposed. That works. Uh, the commission finds the need to improve vehicular and pedestrian safety clearly outweighs the need for six units of affordable housing in this location. Subsection D, stormwater.
Chairman Redman.
Based upon the evidence. Yes, sir.
Can we back up a little bit, go back to the paragraph where, um, in the last sentence, uh. Uh, applicants fail to address critical questions related to the pedestrian. Regarding ADA compliance and the width of walkways, it, 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 it seemed a little. Vague, um, uh, i- it's pedestrian safety, yes, um, ADA compliance. Uh, it, it doesn't comply, eh? Um, and it's more than just the width of the walkways, it's the path of travel, uh, it's the slope. Um, the ramps, I mean, it's just, it's, it's much more complex than, um, this sentence indicates.
True, um. Failed to address critical questions related to pedestrian safety. Um. Comma, lack of ADA compliance in the proposed design?
Yes.
Comma.
Including, uh, the width of the walkways and the path of travel.
There you go. Yep, and then take that out. That works. Does anyone else have any comments on section, subsection C? Okay, move on to stormwater, subsection D. We're almost there, team. Based on the evidence and testimony presented to it, the commission finds that there is substantial public interest in minimizing the threat to safety with respect to how stormwater and drainage is managed and controlled. Uh, on this site. Great. Town engineer Maria Coplet P E and her correspondence dated October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. Indicated that based on the applicant's proposal, the. Quote, stormwater chambers in the garage have been designed to allow for six inches of ponding on the pavement during storm events, which is not permitted. Pretreatment has not been demonstrated for the subsurface system located in the garage. And the applicant failed to demonstrate sufficient clear height to allow maintenance vehicles such as vacuum trucks. To access subsurface systems in the garage. The commission finds that the most persuasive and accurate testimony was presented by John Thompson P E and Maria Copla P E. Who also noted that the applicant did not perform the necessary analyses to understand the environmental impacts. Of the proposed project with respect to stormwater.
Yeah, we, we put an initial cap on applicant. In this paragraph, twice applicant is not capitalized, uh.
Yeah. Good point. Should be, uh, should be capitalized, yep.
Well, there's another one in one, two, three, four, fifth line down.
Right there, right below Maria Copla, yeah.
And then next to the last line.
Yep. Thank you, Mister Ward. The commission further finds that the need to protect the lives and property of the residents of the town of New Canaan and the requirement to provide adequate means to accomplish such need. Clearly outweigh the need for six units of affordable housing. The commission finds that based on the substantial evidence in the record, including but not limited to. The evidence cited above, the proposed housing development plan will result in significant and serious threats to the lives and safety of the residents. And the property of the proposed development and the residents and property near the proposed development. Caused by insufficient stormwater plan that the applicant has proposed.
Applicant. Next to, yeah.
Yep.
Uh Chairman Redman.
Yep.
Kent Turner, um, can we go back to the stormwater, um? The sentence, uh, let's see, where is it, um? Uh, the garage has been. For six inches of ponding on the pavement during storm events. Which is not permitted. Um, I think we need to clarify that a little bit, um. By code, we could design for that and it's permitted, but. By our town's regulations, it's not permitted.
Well, we gotta be careful. This is the exact quote from Maria Copla.
It could put in. Um, it's not parentheses, I don't know what you call those, but that not permitted by the town. Drainage policy?
By local, by local code.
Okay.
Does that work, Mister Turner?
Yes, it does.
Great. So that concludes the main section and that leaves us at the reasonable changes, which is section D. Uh, the submitted plan overly intensifies the use of the site, height, coverage, density. And bulk clearly exceed a reasonable and prudent development. Combined, these characteristics would cause irreparable damage to the Churchill Historic District. And result in the health and safety issues set forth above. The applicant at the public hearings flatly declined to reduce the footprint of the building.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, reduce the footprint of the building, reduce the height of the building. Increase the number of affordable units or increase the length of the deed restriction of the affordable units. There are existing multifamily developments in the historic district to preserve the integrity of the district and maintain the scale, footprint and massing of the historic. Cultural and environmental resources of the Churchill Historic District and do not endanger life and property. Do we need to, uh? There are existing multifamily developments. Can any of those be classified as affordable?
I don't think any of them are deed restricted now.
Okay. Therefore, for the reasons stated above, which the commission adopts as a collective basis for its action. The commission by X votes adopts the following resolution resolved. The site plan application submitted as part of an affordable housing development proposal pursuant to. Act eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes is hereby denied. Moreover, no reasonable changes to the proposed plan can correct the risks and dangers associated with the proposed development. Nor are needed. Or nor are needed off-site changes within the applicant's control or authority to complete. Does that sound right? Pete, does that read correctly? Nor are needed off-site changes?
Uh, you know, I, I think that last paragraph is superfluous. I don't even think we need it.
Need it?
Because, yeah, I don't think we need that. We already have the reasonable changes. Above, so I, I don't think that's necessary. If everybody agrees.
Yeah, because the line above it, therefore, you know, you're, you're stating that, that.
For all the reasons.
Everything above.
Yep.
In this resolution.
Yep, so now we just need a motion and a second. We can fill in the Xs.
That's good. Do I have a motion for denial?
Mister Chairman, this is Commissioner Chris. I move we, uh, deny the site plan application for twenty one, excuse me, fifty one Main Street.
For the reasons set forth in the.
For the reasons set forth in the, uh, document that has just been read. In particular, the, uh, threats to health and safety due to traffic. Uh, and stormwater management as well as, uh, the irreparable harm that will be made to the Churchill Historic District.
Well put. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
I heard Mister Turner. Um, second. Thank you. I call to vote, uh, on the resolution. For the site plan amendment.
If there's, if there's no further discussion.
If there's no further discussion. Is there any need for, does anyone, uh? Need any further discussion on this resolution?
No.
I'm fine.
Then I call to vote, um, Dan Redman, I've, uh. We're, we're voting yes on this resolution of denial, correct?
Correct, a yes vote to deny.
Yes, vote to deny. Dan Redman, I vote yes. Kent Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
Claire Tiscornio.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Art Casavant.
Yes.
And Mister Angle.
Yes.
We have unanimous approval for the denial.
So should I put by unanimous vote or should I put eight to zero?
Put both, by unanimous eight to zero vote.
Hmm.
Okay.
Great. So that takes care of the first resolution for the site plan.
Yep.
Now, let's dig into, just moving this over. Let's dig into. The text amendment next. The text amendment next.
Okay, hold on.
Mm hmm.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Chris. I have a few comments on general findings and reasonable change.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Under general findings, uh, point two. Again, it's eight thirty G in the middle. We want to say section or put a section mark. Symbol in there, um, as you prefer. Uh, also point three, first line. We have the word approximately zero point three eight and drop approximately. We discussed that the previous. Um, discussion.
Mm hmm.
Um, okay. On point four. First, one, two, three, four, fifth line, starting with the relocated. Existing historical building. Again, similar to what we said in the prior discussion. On point five. Um. I believe this is correct and I would. Uh, welcome the comment and insight from other commissioners. It says that permitted developments within the B resident zoning district or in a historic district. I think that was the case.
Well, there are no real development standards in an historic district, Joe.
Okay, that's what I was asking. This is a historic district. I wonder if we should mention that. Okay, fair enough. Uh, see nine. Section and point ten. Uh, it's one, the fourth line. Posed, yeah, yeah, the fourth line developments in the Churchill Historic District period, for example. Cause for example, Jason proposed site, the church walk condominiums are four, you know, so it's a it's a sentence.
Right.
So get rid of that. Um. Those are my comments on that. My assumption, uh, Mr. Chairman. Is that the identified public interests are the same for this document as the one we've just discussed.
Correct.
Uh, and also determining determination and balancing are the same. Is that correct, sir?
I believe so.
Yes.
They are, yeah.
Yep.
And I'll bring over after we get off the call, I'll bring over any. Text changes we made in the first document to these sections. I just can't do it right this moment.
Sure.
Fair enough. Commissioner Nielsen on D reasonable changes.
Yep.
Uh.
Sorry, the third line.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it. On the third line, it would be towards the end church damage to the Churchill Historic District.
Image to the, yeah.
Yeah, Churchill Historic District. And the last, uh, line in that paragraph again, say Churchill Historic District. Those are my comments on the draft, and sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is Commissioner Casavan. Do we wish to delete that? Moreover? Yes. Language as we did in the prior.
Yeah.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
The only difference, so I think you only have to read the findings and then the part at the end, right, where we vote?
I believe so. Is that correct?
Yes, the first three pages and then. The, um. The last page. Is the devote language.
Okay. This is for the text amendment associated text amendment resolution associated with fifty one Main Street. Um, assessors map. Uh, map T block forty three lot eight twenty two. Um, again, this is, uh, dear attorney Hollister certify the meeting of the Canadian planning and zoning commission held on December twenty second, twenty twenty two. It was moved by a vote. Uh, it was moved by. Mr. Chris and signed it in seconded by Mr. Turner to adopt the following resolution. Commission has conducted its review and findings based on materials and testimony in the record. And based on the fact that each member of the commission is personally familiar with the site and its surroundings. Following careful review of the submitted application materials and related analysis, the commission finds the following. Section A general findings. In evaluating the present application, the commission is first required to identify substantial public interests in health, safety and other matters. Which the commission may legally consider. The commission must then determine if the protection of such public interests clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing. Finally, the commission must determine if reasonable changes to the proposed development could be made to protect such interests. The applicant fifty one Main Street LLC. As development plan applicant. And Ryan D. Hollier of Hankley Allen authorized agent for fifty one Main Street LLC. Owners seek approval of a new zoning district called. The Housing Redevelopment Zone H R Z to enable section eight thirty to enable a section eight thirty G set aside. Site plan application for the property located at fifty one Main Street in the B residence zone map T block forty three lot eight twenty two. And located in the Churchill Historic District. The development is a point three eight acre parcel located at the intersection of Main Street Heritage Hill Road and Locust Avenue. It is colloquially known as the Red Cross Building. It is own it is the only parcel in the town of the Canaan that could meet the requirements of the proposed text amendment. The first floor of the new proposed building will be primarily parking. The upper four floors of the new building are approximately seven thousand one hundred and twenty eight square feet. The applicant has proposed twenty dwelling units, two in the existing historical building and on the site and eighteen in the new building. The applicant proposes to build on the site behind the relocated existing historical building. The unit split is five one bedroom units, twelve two bedroom units and three three bedroom units. Individual units will range from seven hundred and seventy four square feet. To seven hundred ninety nine square feet for one bedroom units. One thousand twenty three square feet to one hundred and forty four square feet for two bedroom units. And one thousand ninety five to one thousand, one thousand ninety five square feet to one thousand six hundred fifty nine square feet for three bedroom units. Six units will be rent restricted as affordable. Two one bedroom units, three two bedroom units and one three bedroom unit. Furthermore, not all of the existing historic building will remain intact. Portions of the historic building will need to be demolished.
Hmm.
The applicant has taken position. Consistent, uh, taken a position consistent with a eight thirty G app, uh, application that all local zoning regulations. Are not applicable and thus the proposed plans do not comply with any elements of the permitted developments within the B residence zoning district. The proposed amendment would permit. A development in accordance with the following table and below is listed the matrix which identifies. Site criteria from lot area down to the setbacks and lists the. Uh, the, uh, information for a B residence zone, the proposed development and an H R Z. The proposed amendment. Such, um, point seven, the proposed amendment would permit onsite parking in the amount of twenty six spaces or one point three units. Per, uh, spaces per unit. The proposed amend text amendment is considered an affordable housing application, which means it will support. A development where not less than thirty percent of the dwelling units will be covered conveyed by deed containing covenants. Or restrictions which shall require that for at least forty years after the initial occupation of the development. Such dwelling units will be sold or rented at or below prices which are thirty percent. Or less of the tenant's annual income. Where such income is less than or equal to eighty percent of the state or area mini median income, whichever is less. According to twenty twenty two figures, the state median income for a family of four is a hundred and twelve thousand six hundred. And the area median income for a family of four is a hundred eighty thousand nine hundred. Therefore, the state median income would be used for these purposes. Uh, point nine, when considering a regulation amendment section eight dash three A subset A of the Connecticut general statutes specifies that. Quote, the commission shall shall state on the record its findings on consistency of a proposed regulation or boundaries or changes thereof. With a plan with the plan of development of the municipality. Close quote, section eight point two C three D of the new Canaan zoning regulation states that. In making a decision on the proposed text amendment, the commission take shall take into consideration the plan of conservation development. Prepared pursuant to Connecticut general statutes eight dash twenty three. The. Twenty two thousand fourteen Plan of Conservation and Development for the town of Canaan. Future land use map on page ninety three shows this site as appropriate for institutional use. Which is consistent with the site's historic land use. As an office or nonprofit for religious purposes. The plan of conservation and development does not contemplate high density residential development at this location. The proposed H R Z district would allow a minimum of fifty three units per acre. The planning and zoning commission finds the proposed density of the H R Z district to be inconsistent with the Churchill Historic District. The commission noted that there are existing multifamily developments in the historic district. For example, adjacent to the property proposed site. The church walk condominiums are four units on point seven eight acres for a density of five units per acre. Then we'll jump down to the bottom where we get into. The reasonable changes. Um, do I need to read reasonable cha- uh, changes or just go into the resolution that therefore unresolved, Pete?
The reasonable changes are are the same. I think we added. We added Churchill to that too, but you know what? I would read D. I would read from D down. I would read that. Okay.
So subsection D. Reasonable changes, the submitted text amendment permits an over intensify permits and over intensification of the use of the site. Height, coverage, density and bulk clearly exceed a reasonable and prudent development. Combined these characteristics would cause irreparable damage to the Churchill Historic District. The applicant at the. Public hearings flatly declined to amend the proposed text amendment to reduce the allowable footprint of the building. Reduce the permitted height of the building. Increase the number of affordable units or increase the length of the deed restriction of the affordable units. There are existing multifamily developments in the historic district under existing regulations to preserve the integrity of the district and maintain the scale. Footprint and massing of the historic cultural and environmental resources of the Churchill Historic District. And do not endanger life and property. Therefore, for the reason stated above, which the commission adopts as a collective basis for its action. The commission by X votes adopts the following resolution. Resolved. The proposed text amendment adding. A new section to the new Canaan zoning regulations entitled Housing Redevelopment Zone. Submitted as part of an affordable housing development proposal pursuant to eight thirty G of the Connecticut general statutes. Is hereby denied.
So we just need a motion and a second.
Yep, I'm just getting my list, sorry. Do I have a motion for denial of this application? For this text amendment, sorry.
This is Krista. I'll I'll move to deny the text amendment.
Well, uh, sorry, let me rephrase that. Motion to approve. The. Motion to approve the text amendment denial. Am I saying that?
Well, motion to deny the text amendment and then a yes vote is a is a vote to deny.
Thank you.
So I still make that motion. I I can't rephrase it the way you guys said it, so I'll just.
Thank you. So, yeah. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I think I heard Dick Ward on that.
Ward.
Yep. Great. Let's take a vote.
Any further discussion?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Any further discussion? Does anyone have anything further on this text amendment?
Do we need to state reasons on the record?
No, the reasons are in the what we just read.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, no other discussion. Let's go to a vote. Um, I myself Dan Radman, I vote. Yes, for this denial. Kent Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Claire Tascornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Art Casava?
Yes.
And John Engel?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. This text amendment is denied. Last but not least, we have the map amendment. And again, we'll go through it the same way we just did the text amendment. Taking care of the general findings, we'll read through that. And then we'll move on to the. Um. The resolution at the end.
Uh, Dan, the the general findings are identical up through and including section eight. Section nine and ten are new, so you can incorporate. The same. Eight general findings from the text amendment into the map amendment resolution, if you don't want to read the whole thing.
Well, that helps me a lot. Helps everyone a lot. Thank you.
And Krista will make whatever changes were in the, uh.
Yep.
In the text amendment into the map amendment that, uh, Mr. Chris. Um. Noted.
Perfect. So on this, uh, map amendment, uh, for fifty one Main Street assessors map map T block forty three lot eight two two.
Andrew, sorry. It's Andrew. Could you get here?
Okay, so we'll jump, uh, noting noting what, um. Mr. Gelderman just said about the, uh, uh, identical. Uh, content up through section eight or sub point eight. We'll start with sub point nine on the. Um, on this map amendment. Section, uh, sub point nine is section eight point two D three subset D. Of the new Canaan zoning regulations states that. Before approving any zone change application, the commission shall determine that the proposed zone change. Is point one. In accordance with the plan of conservation and development, point two is suitable for the intended location, point three. Will aid in protecting the public health, safety, welfare and property value or property values. And point four will aid in attaining the purposes of the regulations. Um, sub point ten, the two thousand fourteen Plan of Conservation and Development for the town of the Canaan. Future land use map on page ninety three shows this site as appropriate for institutional use. Which is consistent with the site's historic land use as an office or nonprofit for religious purposes. The plan of conservation and development does not contemplate high density residential development at this location. So with the rest of the text within this, uh. Text, uh, within this amendment for map, the map amendment. We'll scroll all the way down to. The last page, correct, um, we'll take.
You're just simply, Dan, you're just simply incorporating, um, into this resolution. The same provisions from the site plan and the text amendment resolutions up through, um. Section. The last section up 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 through D reasonable changes.
Correct.
Okay.
Subsection D reasonable changes, the submitted plan overly intensifies the use of the site. Height, coverage, density and bulk clearly exceed a reasonable and prudent development. Combined these characteristics would cause irreparable damage. Combined, these characteristics would cause irreparable damage to the historic district and result in the health and safety issues set forth above. Damage to the Churchill Historic District and result in the health and safety issues set forth above. The applicant at the public hearings flatly declined to reduce the footprint of the building, reduce the height of the building. Increase the number of affordable units or increase the length of the deed restriction of the affordable units. There are existing multifamily developments in the historic district that preserve the integrity of the district and maintain the scale. Footprint enassing of the district. Cultural and environmental resources of the Churchill Historic District and do not endanger life and property. Therefore, for the reason stated above, with the commission, which the commission adopts as a collective basis for its action, the commission. By an X vote here adopts the following resolution. Resolved. The proposed map amendment to change the existing zoning district applicable to the property known as fifty one Main Street. From a residence B. Zone. Yep. To a housing redevelopment. Zone. HRZ. Yep, and at the beginning of housing redevelopment, put the letter A. To a housing redevelopment zone, HRZ. Submitted as part of an affordable housing development proposal pursuant to eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Comma, is hereby denied.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Chris. I do have one word change I would suggest.
Sure.
On uh, the beginning of that section, uh, line four. Starting with the word and. I would say. And safety risks as opposed to issues, issues is a bit neutral. Uh, what are delineated in this document are various risks to health and safety. Uh, as we stated, the very end of the paragraph about endangering life and property. So I would, I would say risks, it's more captures the sense of the commission in my view.
Great, I agree with that.
A good change.
I might just have a quick question, Mr. Chairman, where it says your name, you know, by Daniel Radman, it's chairman. Shouldn't just be Daniel Radman Chair or Chairman?
That I don't know.
It's, looks a little weird and it was in the other ones too.
Yeah, I agree. I thought it was odd, but.
Pete, does it matter? Should we, can we take it out?
Take it out. Take it out.
Thanks, Krista. Should I say chairman or just chair? Doesn't matter.
I don't think that matters.
Yeah.
Dan, I assume you're signing the resolutions.
Uh, it looks like I am.
You're the chairman. I don't know though, I usually, cause I usually go in and sign stuff for Lola, but I know the last one for seven fifty one, we'd had John's name on them, so I guess let's just go with it.
Yeah, I guess we'll just stick with that then.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to approve this denial?
A motion to deny.
Is that Mr.?
Just a, a motion to deny.
Do I have a motion to deny?
This is Krista. I'll, I'll make a motion to deny. The map change.
Sounds good. Do I have a second?
A second.
Was that Claire?
Yep.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I hear none. Let's take a vote. Um, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Kent Turner? Sorry, you broke up Kent. Say again?
Yes.
Thank you. Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Claire Tescornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Art Casavat?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, eight to zero. For. Denial. Great. Well, that only took two hours, two and a half hours. Thank you, everyone. Uh, Pete? Other than uh memorializing this uh and doing the postings that we had discussed uh with myself and Krista. Um, what else do we need to do to close this?
Uh, we need to publish notice of the decision within fifteen days.
Yep.
In the newspaper. And um. And then this gets posted on the website and then we're good.
Pete, so even if it, if it's a denial we post as well?
Yes, you post the decision because that starts. The appeal and or resubmission period.
Got it.
Which is fifteen days after the date of publication.
Okay. I'll just confirm. I think Lola already knows this, but I'll confirm.
Yeah. I'm sure she does.
Yep.
Okay. Then we're good. I call a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Resounding seconds.
Uh, happy holidays all.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Take care.
Take care. We'll talk in the new year.
Great job for your first meeting.